Good morning. Hopefully these are on. Good morning. So can I have everyone's attention, please? Welcome and thank you for coming to Wannam's 2020 Annual Meeting. Now, in an effort to expedite the meeting, the Board of Selectmen had worked with the Finance Committee to reduce the number of articles that we're going to have to deal with today, and they are financial priorities. So the warrant is shorter than it normally has been. There will likely, almost certainly, be a special town meeting in the fall to deal with some other matters. But with everything that's going on, the desire was to get priorities dealt with at this meeting and to get the meeting done in the most expeditious manner possible. First, what am I doing here? My name is Tony Fahery, and my preliminary comments this morning relate directly to my position here today. From time to time over the years, I have served as interim town moderator, and I was asked to do that again this year by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen identified two qualifications in the selection process. The first was that I would be available here today and for a pre-meeting agenda. The second is that I have no present intention to be a candidate for election to the Office of Town Moderator. As I say, I've done this on a couple of occasions before, so please be patient with me if some procedural thicket presents itself. But I've consulted with the town administration, the Finance Committee Chair, current town council, who will be to my left, and I think we're prepared for any procedural or substantive issues that may arise today. So at this time, I'd ask the town clerk, Diane Buco, to make a nomination. This is a preliminary matter, a nomination to elect me as temporary moderator. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. There is one vote that's needed. I ask that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen cast the sole vote and then declare the results for this election. Jack?
Yes, please vote for Tony Fahery for our inter-
No, Jack, it's just your vote. We don't have town meetings started yet.
I vote for Tony Fahery.
So if the clerk would note that, we can go forward. So one of the things that we do as a matter of custom is to rise at the beginning of this meeting for the Pledge of Allegiance, recognizing, as we all do, its promise of liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the United States. Before we begin the formal start of the meeting, I want to thank the following: Boy Scout Troop 28, delivering the annual reports; town staff, helping to organize and execute what looks like a very safe town meeting. I mean, this is quite extraordinary, what's been done. I was in charge of the weather, so... I'd also like to thank our town administrator, executive assistant to the town administrator, interim finance director, director of administrative services, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance and Advisory Committee, for the time and attention they've put into preparing for this day as far as the substantive work that we'll be involved with. Finally, I'd like to recognize three residents for their service to the town over a long period of time. Please hold your applause until I'm finished. First, Michael Thery, for six years of service for the Finance and Advisory Committee, including two finance director search committees. Don Killam, for 11 years of service on the Hamilton Fire Department, 42 years of service on the Wannam Fire Department, 18 years as fire chief, and 21 years of service on the planning board. And Catherine Harrison, for her hard work, dedication, including 15 years on the school committee, three years on the finance committee, six years as the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Affordable Housing Trust, and six years on the Board of Selectmen. Now, to have a town meeting, we need really two things: we need a moderator, and we've got an interim moderator, and the town bylaws also require that we have a forum of at least 120 registered voters. And I've been advised by town clerk Diane Buco to my right that a quorum has been met, although looking out there, I think that's pretty easy to see the numbers. And so I now call the annual town meeting to order, and we will omit the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. As is our tradition, we will now recognize the residents who have passed away during the last year. The names are listed on the handouts that you have received or were available and on the town website. Please join me in a moment of silence to show our respect to these people and to their families. It is also a tradition to acknowledge Senator, our state senator and our state representative. I'm not sure if Bruce Carr is here. Running a little late. That's happened before. And Representative Brad Hill. Couldn't make it. We still acknowledge them by all means. Couple of additional preliminary matters. Cell phones, you all know the drill. Everybody, I understand that these days you might need to have your cell phones on, vibrate, or whatever. Just don't take any calls if need be. There's the space over there to my left if you need to take a call. Masks. I'm not, I'm wearing a mask except when I'm speaking. I can look out there and folks are wearing their masks. It may be that some of you will need to lower your mask when speaking. If that's the case, I understand it. And there may be some folks who, for medical reasons or for other reasons, aren't wearing masks. We do have an area off to my left where you can social distance even if not wearing a mask. I want everybody to be comfortable here. It's going to get warm as the day goes on. This jacket isn't going to stay on terribly long. One last thing at the end. I know some of you are here for a one or-
We're looking for a seat, sir.
Articles. When we leave, obviously, we've got a lot of people and a lot of cars, so I'm going to try to make sure that we leave by rows, start from the back. There's going to be, there will be lots of people here to get us moving out here quickly. But I do want to be very careful as we come toward the end of the meeting that we keep our annual town meeting organized, and we're going to move this along just as quickly as we possibly can. The conduct of our meeting is governed by the rules of town meeting, which are procedures developed by the Massachusetts Moderators Association for New England Town Meetings. My responsibilities include presiding over the proceedings, deciding questions of order, declaring votes, and granting leave to address the meeting. To ensure that we have an orderly meeting and that people who want to speak are able to do so, permission of the moderator is required. We've got two microphones back there. I'm going to call them one, which is sort of in the middle, and two, which is a little bit further back. If you are going to speak, you identify yourself and your residence in Wannam. There will be a three, approximately, three-minute speaking maximum per person, per article. I've got a stopwatch here, and I hope I don't have to use it. It's an approximate three minutes. The town clerk's role is to keep the official record of all motions made and all votes taken. In the event of a counted vote, which could happen, the town clerk has several election officers standing by. If that does occur, we ask that everyone be seated in order to ensure an accurate count of their votes. Please note that while we encourage residents to physically distance from those not within their household if you are not within the main tent or the overflow tent, it's going to be impossible for me to see you and for your votes to be taken. Obviously, you've got a card to do your voting. You can stand up and wave, you can do a variety of other things, but the only way, that won't count. The only thing that will count is when you raise that purplish voter card when the time comes. We generally have a number of non-residents attending, and we generally formally allow residents to speak on a particular matter. However, I will assume that the meeting is comfortable allowing the town administrator, department heads, town council to speak when they have relevant information and after being recognized by the moderator. Hearing no objections to that, I declare that it is so by unanimous consent. Our superintendent has a statutory right to speak before the town votes on the school budget. She's been allotted approximately five months to make a presentation on the school budget. And I'll similarly assume that the superintendent may ask the assistants superintendent or other school officials to provide information for the meeting if necessary. If any other non-resident wishes to speak on a particular matter, they may request to do so through the moderator, and I will then ask the town meeting to vote on any such request. As I said, only registered voters may vote. You've got your voting cards in check-in, and there are a few additional, some additional information on town meeting on the backside of that, I believe. So the warrant before us today has nine articles, including what's called a consent agenda. Briefly, articles A through D are the consent agenda articles, annually approved, but required by law. Articles 1 through 4 and 6 propose the operating budget for the next fiscal year. Actually, we're already in it. And operating overrides for the town and the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School District. Articles 5 and 7 handle town and school borrowing, respectively, and both, and one of those requires a two-thirds majority vote. There's been a little bit of confusion about that. Only one of them requires us to make a two-thirds vote. When we get to that, we'll talk about it. Article 8 addresses appropriations under the Community Preservation Act. There is a warrant book with commentary on each article. It gives you a great deal of information. If you folks have them there, there are some extras where they have been as you enter. In each case, I'll provide a brief summary of the article, and I mean brief, and then we'll move forward. Articles A through D, what I refer to as the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion under any article, A through D, it's my impression that we may be able to expedite consideration of articles, four articles, A, B, C, and D. They're routine articles appearing each year and about which there is generally, almost universally, no debate. Therefore, I will ask the meeting whether we'd like to take all such articles together as referred to as a consented calendar. For each of these four articles, I'll read the article and the general purpose. If anyone here wants to consider that article completely separately or any reason, you will say "hold" after I read it. And if five additional voters rise in support, then that article will be removed from the consent calendar. So we'll see if that happens. But Article A proposes acceptance of cemetery trust and other funds. Article B proposes a transfer of $6,000 from cemetery maintenance funds to the Highway Department for costs related to the department's maintenance of cemeteries. If approved, a balance of $8,141.70 will remain in the trust fund. Article C proposes to transfer $35,000 from water operating budget to water capital reserve for future infrastructure replacement, piping and the like. Article D proposes acceptance of Chapter 90 funds and authorizes the town to undertake major road projects qualifying for such funding that comes to us from the state. Now, I heard no, no one rise on those, and hence, I would entertain a motion that Articles A through D be approved as printed in the warrant. A second? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. We can now move on. Take what's in the hands. So that removes five pages from my, um... Article one. You know, one thing I should mention. This is a business meeting, and it's a legislative meeting, and, uh... You know, we're all talking about things that involve us and our neighbors and the like, and we should have fun, we should have a good sense of humor about it, but I want everybody to remember that it should be in a respectful and cordial way. I, I'm, uh... I really do enjoy the applause or the laughter. But once we get into the business of the meeting, I want to be sure that everybody understands that if you don't agree with something, that someone has the side. I want everybody to be respectful of that. It's really, almost never been an issue in the town of Wannam. I can't imagine it would be today. And it's worth it to be saying from the standpoint of the work we've got to do. The annual operating budget for the town fiscal year 2021. The fiscal year is already begun as of July 1, and is set forth in Article 1. Now, all routine expenditures required to provide town services include costs from the town chair of the regional school district budget and shared services agreements are organized by category. The Finance and Advisory Committee working with the town administrator or Selectmen, department heads, compiles the annual budget and will present a motion to authorize expenditures to operate the town and provide funding therefor. After a brief overview of the budget, and by brief, I mean three, four, five minutes, by the, you know, the budget and the town's financial condition by Finance and Advisory Chair Alex Beegan on behalf of the committee, I will entertain a formal motion under Article 1, and then Alex will read the budget totals by department, which is what we always do. If anyone has a question or a comment at that stage in the proceeding or a proposed amendment on a budget line item, say "hold" following the reference to that budget line and make a note of it. And after all categories included, we'll go back through the budget to each held item. And at that point, I'll recognize any person that has a question on any of those held items, question, comment, amendment. Amendments to the official motion might include a change of some sort in a line item. If anything is a complicated amendment that's being proposed, I will require it to be presented to me in writing. Once all such held matters have been disposed of and action taken on any amendments, the town meeting will vote on that main motion, Article 1, as amended if in fact an amendment has been presented and affirmed through vote. So let's begin. Alex Beegan is going to make a presentation, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Wannam residents, good morning. Unlike all other, um, in town meetings and under these circumstances, we're not willing to power bias as we typically do, and we may prepare remarks to be very rude as you are the moderator today. So in a few minutes, I'll attempt to just give you a couple of key points that FinCom feels are important to you today as you vote on primary financial articles. A quick thank you to FinCom members who've dedicated, you know, demonstrated so much dedication to this process throughout, especially in the challenges of summer. Generally speaking, where we land in FY21 budget planning pre-COVID, certainly in March, we got a weird amount of this process, but trends were for us often. Town expenses for FY21 have increased 5%, while schools' town assessment increased by 9%. So over the third straight year, we continue this trend of expense increases outpacing that of revenue and putting us in a prop to a half override scenario as we have in FY19 and FY20. In March, we faced a fiscal deficit therefore of 1.08 million, which is under 1.1 million. And we had an article scenario whereby a town and school operating override closed that gap or avoided subsequent successful passing of prop to a half overrides. The breakdown of that combined override was approximately $360,000 for the towns and approximately $720,000 for the schools, over one-third, two-thirds. The warrant articles were structured in such a way that this gap, of course, disclosed via those articles, and then a month or two to three split was where I'd add a proportional dollar increase attributable to the schools and the towns. So total FY20, FY21 yearly increase, one-third to the town, two-thirds to the schools. Okay, that's what we were, what we do as a result of COVID, now we're actively in response. We've had a dozen or so meetings over the last three months, and we've shown two public forums, a budget forum, and our warrant hearing, of course, to hear from residents to get an opportunity to explain the budget process, where we're at. These primary financial articles, implications on the tax rate and the like, as well as get their questions. Part of the town officials, of course, look very closely at things like 112 budgeting options. Should we not have a budgetary fiscal year, which of course remains the case for a very short time period? We look to implement cash flow projections and changes, revenue intake, or property taxes, like, and change our forkings, we change our both revenue expectations for FY21, reflecting an expected reduction of state aid of 25% as well as local receipts in the form of state and student motor vehicle excise taxes, which are mainly a source of revenue for the town. While working with the town officials, the Finance Committee and Select Board were able to reduce FY21 town expenditures, reducing the town override from, excuse me, from $360,000 to $238,000. Those amounts are under town control as well. We also reduced the free cash usage from $600,000 to $500,000 by moving some capital to the operating budget and deferring other capital items to a later town meeting, which is expected this fall. So the purpose, as the moderator has explained, today is to address and do primary financial articles that will enable the town to adopt a budget to continue its operations, to pay its bills, school assessments, salaries, et cetera, and to defer the less credible financial articles and non-financial articles to a full-time meeting. Those are the primary points I wanted to make today. I wanted to just point out a couple of pages in your part two of your annual town report in reverse order on page 10. You'll find that right before we read the subtotals for each of the categories in the budget, there's a breakdown of the legitimate calculation, which is important to understand with respect to the prop to a half. And then on page 5, looking back a couple of pages, there's a tax rate scenario. I'm sure we just take each of those words. We have our current tax rate of 1,894. And the R primary articles, for the most part, the town and school override articles, 36, respectively, should we associate a dollar increase and then the effect on the tax rate of 80 cents and $1.35, respectively, combined on 64. So should both the town and school override articles pass, as they did at the ballot today, town meeting, then we would expect a roughly 8.7% tax increase year-over-year. FY21, those are estimates, they're the number of items that we will constitute to be able to make that. I'm almost at my five minutes here, so I will wrap and thank town meeting for being part of this today. I'm going to process as the legislature's calling. Thank you.
Well, that presentation having been made, then, I would ask Alex to go through the line items in the budget. I'm sorry, the superintendent is going to speak now? I'm sorry. Okay, the superintendent of Schools has a brief presentation to make as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator, and good morning to Wannam residents. My name is Mary Beth Maniots. I am both pleased and honored to have been appointed as your next superintendent of schools for the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School District. This is day eight on the job. So as I want to acknowledge as I present the budget information, the hard work and efforts of the many people that put this together, I'd like to recognize Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, Ms. Leoni, the entire Hamilton-Wannam Regional District School Committee, and also Dr. Julie Kuppenberger, who was interim superintendent of schools last year. I would be quickly walking you through the packet that you received when you came in today and highlighting a couple of key issues relating to this budget. First page, past the general information sheet, makes the point that the budget you are voting on today is different than the budget the school committee originally voted in February. Given the extraordinary situation that we find ourselves in with the pandemic, in May, the Board took the action of reducing the expenses of the operating budget by approximately $1.3 million as a proactive measure. What we know in this budget is that lots of things can be true at the same time. We know that taxpayers are stressed and overburdened. We also know that this budget does not include everything that the school district needs, and we also know, given the effects of the pandemic, hopefully, when school opens, reopens in the fall, our parents and our students are going to need the school district more than ever. In response to these competing needs, we have done the following in this budget. Again, $1.3 million has been proactively reduced from expenses. This has included reducing over 23, or just about 23 positions, including four district administrative positions. And we are working diligently to reallocate existing resources and looking for alternative funding for COVID-related expenses. One of the things that you will find in your packet is a list of expenses that we are anticipating having to fund related to the COVID- having to fund related to the COVID pandemic. I want, in your packet, you also have a list of the positions that have been eliminated from the budget for the school year in response to this crisis. I will share with the community that some of these reductions will not be sustainable, that we will need to look at how we restore them moving forward. This budget of $37,23,572 reflects a 5.93% year-over-year increase. In your packet, you have information about the major categories and year-over-year information that make up the entire budget. You also have information regarding the net assessment of this operational budget, both for Hamilton and for Wemond. Another source of information you will find in your packet is related to the 21 debt service budget. This budget has not been changed since February and represents $413,000 to support the bonds voted on by the communities. Finally, I want to speak to what it is that we need moving forward. One of the things that is critically important in this moment is clarity around budget. The system right now understandably is taxed and stressed as it tries to find its way and ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students and again, hopefully being in a position to reopen in the fall. Clarity around the budget helps us to do that. We know that we will be asking for flexibility. Agility is going to be the word of the day. We are going to need flexibility as we meet the unanticipated safety, social, emotional, academic, and physical needs of our students, our families, and our staff. And we know that we are going to need community support to weather this storm and to position our schools and towns well in the future. What we committed, we want you to know that we are committed to reevaluating existing programs and structures to ensure that we have the greatest level of efficiency and effectiveness while at the same time delivering a world-class education to our students. We are committed to building budgets year-over-year that are more predictable and sustainable. And we are committed to collaborative and unified partnerships with the town managers, boards of selectmen, and FinCom members. At this point in time, we have both big challenges and opportunities. As we work together to row in the same direction and stay solution-focused, we strengthen our communities and our schools. I'd like to end with a brief quote from Helen Keller, who said, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." I thank you and would be happy to answer any questions that we may have.
Thank you very much. That was our new superintendent of schools, Mary Beth Manios. Just a word about the characters that we've got here. To my right, we have the clerk, Diane Duco, Finance and Advisory Committee Chair, Alex Vega, who's I already spoken to, and members like Farion, Jim Burden, Dave Malatano, and Carrie Jelsoft. And they are also joined by Chris Pollak, Interfinance Director, and Jackie Reshahan, Director of the Administrative Services. On my left, thankfully, we've got a town council, who will correct any mistakes that I make. School committee chair, Michelle Bailey, vice chair, Michelle Oregon. Are there any other school committee members here? Okay, they're all here, okay. And as I mentioned, we've heard from the new school superintendent. So we're now going to talk about Article One, and I will entertain a motion with the town vote to appropriate the sum of $21,371, I'm sorry, $21,371,441 to try the town's expenses for fiscal year 2021, the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, including expenses for the town and regional school district, all as set forth under Article One of the warrant, and for such purposes to raise from taxation the sum So, that motion has been made, and now Alex is going to read through the budget, and I will acknowledge any holes that are raised on the budget, and we'll go back and we'll talk about any of those holes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay, I'll be reading through in your Part II of the warrant, you know, page 11. And I'll be reading the subtotals for each of the main categories, so you'll note that I'll skip over some of the broader totals. I'll list that I remember the name of the category and the expense on the far right. Item 114, moderator, $50. Item 122, selectman, $12,474. Item 123, town administrator, $142,384. Item 131, finance and advisory committee, $250. Item 132, reserve fund, $125,000. Item 139, municipal audit, $25,500. Item 141, assessors, $75,485, with tax title expense separated at $10,000. Item 149, finance department, $267,634. Item 151, town council regal, $75,000. Item 155, information technology, $83,541. Item 160, town hall, $205,110. Item 161, town clerk, $83,391. Item number 170, planning and land use, $75,246. Item 192, facilities management, $178,783. Item 195, town report, $6,000. Item 199, iron rail property, $47,900. Item 210, police, the numbers on the following page, $1,451,365. Item 220, fire, $784,353. Item 240, permitting and inspectional services, $180,990. Item 294, tree warden, $27,727. Item 310, regional school district, total Hamilton Wemond Regional School District, $11,596,795. Item 320, regional vocational school district, $170,609. Item 422, highway department, $1,022,139. Item, hold on, I'm sorry. Hold on, Matt? I'm not sure. Item 423, snow room, $106,050. Item 424, street lighting, $20,000. Item 433, rep collection and disposal, $446,400. Item 491, cemetery, $11,399. Item 510, board of health, $43,465. Item 541, council on aging, $114,747. Item 543, veterans benefits, $29,021. Item 620 for the joint library, it's on the following page, $1,163,000. Joint recreational program, item 640, $90,583. Item 691, historic district commission, $200. Item 840, intergovernmental, $26,224. Item 911, retirement, $836,419. Item 914, employee benefits, $870,275. Item 916, Medicare, $63,000. Item 945 for general insurance, $145,000. Item 991, other post-employment benefits or OPA, $60,000. Subtotals for town debt or principal, which is item 710, $405,000. Item 751 is the subtotal for interest on town debt, $45,186. Watering rest as an offset, $93,000. And the, excuse me, the personnel reserve item, $38,110. Lastly, item 450, water funds, $462,473. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Well, thank you. Am I correct that there were no holes raised? Well, then the first thing I ought to do is point out that I jumped over one paragraph and failed to introduce our town council, Lauren Goldberg, as well as our town administrator, Anthony Ansally, and the board of selectmen, which is pretty important as well, Jack Wilhelm, our new chair, John Flamemzi, and our new member, Gary Chisw. So, each of those individuals may very well have comments that arise or responses to questions that people have. No holes having been presented, I would at least like to ask the president, does anyone have anything else to say about Article One, or may we proceed to vote? Procedure question has been raised. We had a motion that was made. I'd like to hear, second, and be sure it was seconded. The motion had been made, seconded. I think we're prepared to vote now. So this is a majority vote. All those in favor with respect to Article One, please raise your voting cards. Should have asked who's opposed. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and it is unanimous. Here again, I'll entertain a motion with the town vote to transfer the sum of $499,085 from free cash to be used to balance the budget for the period July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. So moved. Is there a second? Okay, so Article Two, and this is going to be presented by... Well, Article Two is to see what sum of money the town will vote to transfer from free cash to be used to balance the budget for the period July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, or take any other action with respect thereto. Do we have questions or comments on that transfer of free cash? Seeing none. Seeing none, we move to a vote. All of those in favor of Article Two, please signify by raising your voting cards. Thank you very much, all those opposed. Once again, that passes by a majority, and indeed it is unanimous. So we're going to move on to Article Three, the override for the town annual operating budget. Here again, I'll entertain a motion with the town vote to raise an additional sum of $237,924 for the purposes of funding a portion of the town's fiscal year 2021 annual operating budget as approved just now, under Article One. Mr. Vega, is some move? Do I hear a second?
Second.
So the official motion is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $237,924 for the purposes of funding a portion of the town's annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, provided however that the vote taken hereunder was of course contingent upon the approval by the voters at an election with respect to proposition two and a half, and of course, that has already happened. State law does not require a sequence where we first vote at town meeting and then have an election. In 2020, like everything else, the election came first. And that override allows the town to raise the funds appropriated hereunder outside the limits established by Mass Fener Law's chapter 59, section 21C. Are there any comments, questions? Once again, hearing none. Hearing none, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify with your voting cards. All those opposed? We have a smattering of votes in opposition. Please note for the record that it passed as needed by a majority. Article Four is loosely picked up, $50,000 item. It was defeated in the election, and hence, as town moderator, interim town moderator, I am ruling that this article has been lost under the circumstances, and we therefore will not vote on it, not at least at this town meeting. Number Five. Number Five is the debt authorization and exclusion. And this vote, unlike other votes, requires a two-thirds, because it involves borrowing by the town, it requires a two-thirds vote at this town meeting. So I would entertain a motion with the town vote to authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, to borrow the sum of $475,000 to purchase and equip a new fire truck, including all other incidental and related costs, and approve our provide as printed in the warrant. And do I have a second? The motion has been moved and seconded. To see if the town will vote to approve the sum of $475,000 to purchase and equip a new fire truck, including all other incidental and related costs, and as funding therefore to determine whether this amount shall be raised, appropriated, transferred from available funds, or borrowed. If borrowed, to authorize If borrowed, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and further that any premiums received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this move, unless any premium applied to the payment of cost of issuance of said bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized in the bargain to pay such costs by a like amount. And again, this goes on, provided however that the vote taken hereunder is expressly contingent upon what has already happened, the approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called debt exclusion, allowing the town to raise the money needed to repay the principal and interest on such bonds or notes outside the limits established by Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). Chief Cavanagh is up. Briefly, the chief wants to make a statement of support, and I believe that Jack Wilhelm has asked for thirty seconds. All so remains.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome, everyone. It's safe to take this time and objects to very important reasons for why it is critical to replace our main pump truck. During our annual inspection with this pump up, it was found to have a screen rust, corrosion, and frame separation. This truck will not pass another inspection without costly repairs. This engine will be twenty-one years old, does not warrant putting any significant amount of money into it, knowing that this fire truck will only last a short additional time. When this truck was built, it was built with a split frame. The new truck would be a one-piece frame, and the body of the truck would be stainless steel, so we would not get these extra costs. If this truck override does not pass, the insurance services office, which determines the premiums of fire insurance for all residential and commercial buildings, insurance premiums will go up. The department's standard response to any fire alarm incident is two pumps in the lab. This is the standard to stay compliant with the National Fire Protection Association. Again, this standard is not met, and will negatively impact the I S L rating for fire insurance premiums. This truck is our main frontline fire truck, and responds to work in fires, motor vehicle accidents, brush fires, Beverly Airport, Ford College, and mutual aid. This fire truck also carries vital equipment, such as SCVAs, round mirrors, lighting, and much more specialized equipment to handle any emergency that might arise. This fire truck also responds to all mutual aid requests that involve pumping to respond. Mutual aid, whether we are covering, going to rectify a fire, or being on a rapid intervention team, is extremely important to have. If the department does not have a new pump to send for mutual aid requests, or in that fact, any piece of equipment to send to other communities, then we will not get mutual aid returned. This is extremely important. We desperately need this new pump truck, and we humbly request a positive vote today. Thank you.
And Jack, thirty seconds.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the board of selectmen and the four departments, I humbly urge you to vote for this desperately needed fire truck. It will be a finance of a twenty-year period, and it will allow us to continue to receive so-called mutual aid, which when we need it, we really, really need it, which is on average about fifteen times a year. So I please, I urge you to vote for this.
Okay, to correct, that financing will be over ten years. Are there any questions for the chief, or other voters, comments? Anything else to be dealt with on... I'm sorry? If there is someone, uh, we've got, we've got two mics here, just to remind people. Uh, mic number one is the one that's closest to me, mic number two, further back, if you've got a comment.
Good morning. I'll be brief. My name is George Gilpin, out of the thirteen houses on the road. Just wanted to point out, none of the elected officials, Bruce Paugh, Brad Hill, showed up today. This is something that they should be lobbying on behalf of Beacon Hill. It's an election in November. They should be out campaigning, and they're not here. I'm down for this, because we need it. But when we go to the ballot box in November, we should remember today the overrides that were taken, because they didn't have the decency to show up and support us. They take us for granted, because they have other constituencies everywhere else, and we really need to think about having better representation on Beacon Hill for our town and the town of Hamilton, because this is continually happening every year, where we're going to have to override, override, we're not getting proper support from Beacon Hill. So, I love the fire department, I love you guys, but I want all my friends and neighbors to please remember that when you go in November, think about that before you check the box with people that aren't supporting us here today. So, thank you.
And the moderator would simply like to note, for the record, my understanding is that our state senator is in session right now, and the Senate is in session, which is the reason why he is there and not here, at least today. Are there any other comments that directly bear on this borrowing article? Seeing... If there's anyone else, please line up, so that we, you know, just don't lose any time.
Marty Adler, three Stanton Street. Could you tell us how much the repairs are estimated to be, and how long the truck will last without, or, you know, just doing the repairs?
The repairs, on a minimum, would have been one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. On this particular truck, everything is attached to the frame. Brake lines, electric lines, you name it, it's attached to it. So as you dig deeper, whatever you remove, brakes or cracks, that also has to be removed. And it just got to a point, the truck in four years is going to be put in reserve status either later, so it's no point in putting that large amount of money into it.
With apologies, the gentleman who just spoke, we didn't get your name and address. Again, it's just a problem with the, with the mic.
Martin Adler, three Stanton Street.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any other comments? Seeing none, I think we're ready to vote on Article Six. Now, there has been back and forth on this. Article Five. That's why I've got all this held up here. Uh, this is a two-thirds vote, because it involves borrowing by the town. So, uh, with that in mind, um, the motion having been made and seconded, all of those in favor, please raise your voting cards. All of those opposed? There are a limited number of no votes, but the moderator determines that this is nearly unanimous, and the vote passes by its necessary two-thirds vote. Which gets us to Article Six. Okay, I will entertain a motion with the town vote to raise an additional sum of seven-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars for the purposes of funding a portion of the town's annual assessment for the fiscal year 2021 Hamilton Regional School District Budget, as approved under Article One. So moved. And do I have a second? Apparently I don't have to reread the, the article itself, and so... Are there questions with respect to this holdup? Seeing none, hearing none. This is, this is a majority vote, because it involves borrowing not by the town, but by the school committee. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is a majority vote. Okay, all of those in favor, please signify by raising your voting cards. All of those opposed? There are several votes in opposition, but it passes by majority. Now, to the debt authorization. I'm trying to get through this more quickly to beat the end of this. Article Seven, debt authorization and exclusion. Here again, I will entertain a motion with the town vote in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16d, to approve the nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars borrowing authorized by the Hamilton, Wyandotte Regional School District School Committee for the purchase and equipping of the capital items listed under Article Seven of the warrant, including the payment of all incidental or related costs. So moved. Do I have a second? Hearing none, seeing no one, I think once again, we're ready to vote. And this requires a majority. All of those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you very much. All of those opposed? Once again, there are people who vote in opposition, and I rule that the motion has been passed by majority. I think to be safe, since there was a question raised about whether, whether the town also had to have a two-thirds vote, or whether only the school committee needed a two-thirds vote, I'm also going to note for the record that the vote was overwhelming, and if a two-thirds vote had been necessary, it was achieved. Okay, Article Eight. I'm hoping we can do, with everything else that's gone on the way ahead so far, I'm hoping we can do this by consent as well, although it is broken down into several different items. Article Eight proposes appropriation of the Community Preservation Act budget for the upcoming fiscal year, including reservations for each of the three purposes of the act: open space, including land for recreational use, historic resources, and community housing, as well as for debt service and administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. This year, the Community Preservation Committee is also recommending appropriations from the Community Preservation Fund for a limited number of projects. Now, by way of background, the town adopted the Community Preservation Act back in 2005. The town assesses a three percent surcharge on the tax levy on real property for community preservation purposes, and also receives state matching funds. Each year, the Community Preservation Committee evaluates the town's community preservation needs. A recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee is required for any appropriation of CPA funds. We will vote on the annual reservations and appropriations first, and then separately on each of the individual projects. And I will now call on Patrick Guadell, Vice Chair of the CVC, for the report of the Community Preservation Committee, and then I'll ask Mr. Guadell to read through all of the CVC motions, as Mr. Vigan did with Article One. And if you've got, if anyone has a question, or a comment, or proposed amendment on a motion, here again, say hold as to that item, following reference to that budget line, and we'll handle all holds before we proceed to a final vote. Take it away.
Thank you very much. Uh, so the Community Preservation Committee voted on February 3, 2020, to recommend the approval of sections of Article Eight. Article Eight, Section One, this is a housekeeping item, where we, we share ten percent of the mileage received every year to the three dedicated buckets. So it would be forty-two thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars to Historic Resources Reserve, the same amount, forty-two thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars to Open Space and Recreation Reserve, forty-two thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars to Community Housing Reserve, and the balance of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to the FY 2021 budgetary reserve, to the unencumbered funds, except by the act itself. And then we would appropriate from the CPF FY 2021 estimate in reserves, eight thousand five hundred dollars for CPC administrative expenses. That's Article One. Uh, Section One. Article Eight, Section Two, one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars for the FY 2021 debt service in the town hall, with funding sources as printed in the warrant. Article Eight, Section Three, CPC is recommending town meeting pass over this article until a fall special town meeting. Article Eight, Section Four, this article updates the terms of the grant agreement with the D O S, board of selectmen, and community house, but makes no new or additional allocation
There were no holds, so... I am hearing no holds. I will entertain a motion with the town vote to approve Article Eight, Section One, Two, and Four as printed in the warrant, and pass over Article Eight, Section Three. So moved. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. No holds having been made, apparently no questions being raised. Just going to remind people, after we're done with this last vote, um, we're going to try to exit, I'll give some instructions about how we're going to exit, and, uh, hopefully we'll get everybody home as quickly as possible. So, I'd like to now entertain a vote. I'd like for us now to vote on the three sections that have been presented to you for Article Eight. Please vote by raising your voting cards. All of those in favor? All of those opposed? There are a few, there are a few in opposition, but I rule that, that article gets passed by majority. Okay, we'll come to the end of our business for today. I want to thank everyone for your participation. There wasn't too much lively debate, but that's okay too. Um, the Yoshas will dismiss you by row, from the back to the front. Select church, so everybody kind of hang in there until your rows call. I want to remind everyone to look at the town's website for updates on the COVID-19, vacancies on town boards, and may I have a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting for twenty-four. So moved. A second? A second? A voice vote, all in favor?